Man, you play so much, man. I had to go into the middle.
Good evening. I would like to tell the Flint Board of Education to meet on the phone immediately at 6:30. This is Warren, is this how you call his name? Please, please, please say President for that. Take the action. Craig Alona.
President.
Craig, you're in, just be P.
President.
I know.
Vice President, fine.
I got it.
Assistant Secretary, Teresa McIntyre. Secretary, Vernon. And myself, President. Six present. The board will not hear comments from the board. The board is allowed thirty minutes of public speaking. And I am at six thirty. The board should have the right to divest another person who they address for on the same subject. We ask that you state reasons for addressing the board and introduce your remarks that prevent from matter within a court of the board and not address any individuals by name. Please state your name and address first before beginning to speak. It is now six thirty-two. Please approach the audience if you would like to speak. Thank you.
Karen!
Good evening. Karen Christian, an elementary school teacher and president of the United Teachers Committee. Like each and every one of our teachers here, I've gotten an education profession because of a deep love for helping students learn and creating a brighter future for our children and community. And also, like each and every one of our teachers here, I know that the quality of an education is only as good as the teacher providing it. This should go without saying, but apparently it does need to be said. Flint children deserve to have great teachers leading their classrooms so they can receive the education they need to succeed in college, the workplace, or just in life. Flint students deserve that opportunity, but the Flint Board of Education seems determined to take that opportunity away from our kids by denying them a good education. A few months ago, the United Teachers of Flint and Flint Community School Administrators and their lawyer collaborated on a settlement agreement. This agreement was painstakingly crafted, word by word, number by number, with the help of the state mediator. The agreement addressed critical issues that have long plagued our school district. These issues include teacher recruitment and retention, long overdue pay increases, and staff advancement for school employees. This agreement also promised to transition back to a traditional calendar that was requested by the school district leaders. Neither side got everything that they wanted, but were able to reach an agreement and everyone was excited to get this history behind us and focus on the future. But in the bizarre move, the Flint School Board rejected the agreement at its January seventeenth meeting and instead is proposing to minorities negotiations between the district's labor relations professionals and the union. Just to be clear, this never happens. School boards hire professional, expert administrators, and attorneys with decades of experience to oversee day-to-day budgets, including labor negotiations. Meanwhile, the school board refuses to explain its rationale that makes sense to educators' parents or the Flint community. Almost two months have passed since the school board rejected its own administrator settlement agreement, and there's been nothing. And the longer this drags out, the more and more qualified teachers we lose to other school districts or retirement where educators are paid a decent wage when they go to a different school district they treat as professionals. We cannot sit idly by and allow the local politicians on the Flint School Board to harm our students by refusing to provide them with quality educators they deserve in their schools. They are robbing Flint children's futures, and enough is enough. For the long-term success of our students, we cannot continue allowing the Flint Board of Education to bleed our schools dry of the high-quality teachers Flint kids deserve. Since the school board refuses to take action, we must act. We must act for the sake of our students. We must act for the sake of our schools. We must act for the sake of our communities. The time is now.
Hello. My name is Johnny St. Patrick, PDA and change drive. I'm a retired Flint teacher. I started, I'm gonna date myself, I started at Bryant Elementary School, in the high school that goes. And I've ended up at S- at Siskiyou Elementary School. My husband's dedicated thirty-four years to Flint Community Schools, starting at the old morning, to the new morning, and then getting up at Central High School where he was choir director and English teacher. All five of our children started school, kindergarten, at summer from school. Four of them graduated from Central High School and one from the old Flint Academy, which joined with Southwest Academy, I'm excuse me, Southwest High School to become Flint Academy, and South Park Flint Academy, excuse me. I have seen many things changes throughout the years, none more dramatic than the disrespect from teachers. I'll tell you what I mean. When Flint had its real financial crisis, the teachers gave up a nineteen percent of their wages. They gave that up to save the Flint schools, but they haven't received the respect due for what they did. And the time they were promised that they would eventually do would be made whole, they haven't been. This new contract, which they tried to, which they agreed to, which you, your negotiators agreed to, would make them whole again. It's sad when you think about what has happened to Flint schools. My daughter, Karen Christian, is her. She's been thirty-three years in this district, and you know, she still makes about the same amount I did fifteen years ago when I was teaching. What profession is there that in fifteen years, you don't raise your salary? And you're stuck, you're stuck, what profession is there? These teachers have to go to college, they have to get a master's degree, they have to get further education, that costs them. They have to feed and clothe their children.
Yes!
They have to send their children to college, and they don't have the wage, they can't do that. They're stuck, and this, what profession is there? Fifteen years, it stays the same place, my livelihood, no, that gets us. We have teachers who are leaving Flint, going to other districts and getting a ten thousand dollar raise. Our teachers, they showed their dedication. They gave up all that, all this time, they've given up, given up, given up. It's time to give back.
Hi, my name is Joel Jordans, and I reside at Lutzer Lake in Flint, Michigan. Good evening, Mr. Jones, Flint Board of Education. And if I get teary-eyed, because he doesn't have a passion. I'm a teacher who has taught eighteen years in Flint Community Schools. It has been a challenging experience, and that's. I started in two thousand and six and was beat Slid because my services were not needed after that first year. I was recalled only to be picked beat Slid to the following year, and the following year after that, and the following, I think you know where I'm going. You can see, I was being Slid seven straight years of my eighteen years here. Did I panic or worry? Sometimes, yes, and sometimes I just trusted the process. But every year when I was recalled, I came back with eager anticipation to meet my students and to help them to grow and learn. So not just the beat Slid being over and over, but the constant movement of teachers. And I know some of these people know this. I know I'm not alone, but I've been in eight elementaries in eighteen years. About the time I get to know the students and build relationships, I've moved like a chess piece to another school in a community of students that needs stability because of the instability sometimes they experience in their lives. We don't, we do a disservice to our students and families. In two thousand and fifteen, I was able to purchase my own home in the city of Flint. I chose Flint because I wanted to reside in the community I taught in and would see kids in my neighborhood and be able to engage and bond with them. I also bought it because I knew I could vote for the school board if I can. I was excited about this. And having a say in the leadership in my district. I voted for four of the board members. I even have had the wonderful privilege of teaching one of you. When you created for these positions, I even reached out to the UTS leadership and asked if we can endorse those four, and we did, actually, there were five, but four, we did. That's how much I believed in you. I cannot even begin to tell you the hurt, the disappointment, the anger I felt these past couple of months, not being supported by this board. I believed in it. I feel like down and just, I went outright shamed by promises of supporting teachers. I would also like to bring up my last point. When the pay cuts and freezes occurred in two thousand and fifteen, I had to come up with income to supplement this loss. I worked in retail, I would teach all day, but even my contractual time, raced to my retail store and worked till eleven PM at night sometime, and then get up the next morning and do it all over again. I did my best not to complain and showed up for my students to give them the educational experience they deserve. Today, in two thousand and twenty-four, I don't work at the retail store anymore, but I have come up with other sources of income and worked three other jobs that make up these differences. And I am not alone in this. I'm sure there's many of you. And I'd like you to hear in this auditorium, work other jobs and show up every day for the students in this district. I looked at my family a couple of weekends ago and said, and I quote, "I'm tired, I really want to work in a world where I can provide." I beg you. I beg you, because I'm a gym teacher, I can speak like this. If you consider your students and you take care of the people, because you can talk all day about caring about students, but if you don't take care of your people, you don't care about your students.
Good evening, Bruce Jordan, five oh nine five, exchange drive. I proudly and humbly represent the United Teachers Board. I'll be direct, UTS has requested several meetings with this district over the past three months, over the past two weeks. Those requests either one were ignored or two were denied by the board because the district must give permission for the administration's speakers. And that conversation's not happening. Teachers did not make the decision today. They were sick and tired.
Yes.
In fact, it was one of the hardest decisions likely they've ever had to make in their professional, in their non-professional, in their personal lives and career. They put it out there. They risked. I need you to respect. You don't have to. I get it, but I need you to. What they did today is they stood up. What they what they did today was stood up for what they believe is a wrong, and it is. I'm just gonna close with this. Concessions were meant to be forever, and forever means today. I argue. In fact, I beg you. We need a negotiation, we need to come together, or this district will not survive.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Gass, and my home is Chico Street, I'm from Michigan. But I stand before you as a proud Flint teacher, but also a very proud Flint kid. So we elementary. Oh, I said everything you're crying. So we elementary, Lowell Middle School, and Flint Central High School. Those are the buildings I called home growing up. Those are the places I received an excellent education, and those are the places where my teachers invested themselves in me to help make me the person, the educator I am today. I wanted to be like so many of them. I remember their faces to this day, and I can make every teacher I can. I won't waste your time and do that though. With all due respect, and I mean no disrespect, I cannot name one school board member's name or one superintendent's name from when I was a teacher, I'm sorry, from when I was a student studying in Flint Community Schools classrooms. It's my teachers I remember, because it was my teachers who loved and taught me daily. For the past thirty-one years, I've called King Elementary, Scott Elementary, and now Freeman Elementary my home. Only this time, I didn't call one in the room standing at the front. Some of you sitting on this stage have graced me and my students by coming into my classroom. You've watched me teach, talked with my kids, and seen firsthand the engagement and learning taking place in my room. For those of you who have not, why not? Please come and see me. I'm in room one of Freeman. Come anytime, no appointment needed, and see for yourself. For the past thirty-one years, I have given my best to the young people. I've been lucky enough to teach. They are not just my scholars, they are not just my students in my class, they are so much more. They are my kids, and they still want to come visit me. I get their wedding invitations, I get their baby shopper invitations, I get their military photos in storage of how they're doing as adults. I've been in this district so long as a teacher that I'm even getting their babies in my classroom, but I'm not sure how much longer I can choose to call Flint home. The pay cuts and the freezes we teachers have taken for years has cost me personally a great deal. The way the way trouble in Flint truly does affect the students of Flint Community Schools. You're not attracting new teachers to this beautiful district, and you're not, and you're making it so hard for those of us already teaching here to continue to choose Flint. Who will teach our kids when we have our teachers leave? Who will teach my babies when I have to leave? I apologize for coming over, but if you will not listen to me as a proud Flint teacher, then I beg you, please listen to me as a proud Flint kid. Please talk with the union. I want to continue to choose Flint. Please.
Excuse me, my apologies, I'm抱歉. As the president of this board, I want you guys to hear me clearly. We're gonna end shortly, but won't you hear me, because we're gonna want to close door to discuss this matter, and we're gonna probably speaking at some cost, but I don't mean, do you think, take this as disrespect? We just want to get to the close door. We hear you, we understand what everybody's here, we have three minutes, it's about six fifty now, but I don't want you to be bitter in saying that we're cutting off at our kids' half, but we will be cutting off about seven, one, several, two, so we can just get to the bottom of this and go into close door. I'm Steve.
Good evening. As you know, my name is Florence Namar, and I am one of two direct hire, in-person speech line of candidates in this district. I currently serve at DTM, Edgewood, and on the early childhood evaluation team. I understood that the board, some of the board members may have needed a settlement agreement for restorative steps, mostly about this teachers on the bottom of the K scale. As I mentioned last time, I was hired by Flint Schools in the spring of two thousand and sixteen, began in the sixteen seventeen school year, but actually began working that summer doing compensatory services before the school year began to students who needed those services because they had not received them during the school year. If the agreement signed by Mr. Gardner, I already have, does go through, it is those of us in the middle of the K scale that benefit the most. I, for example, would move six steps on the K scale as I have had very minimal increases in my eight, almost eight years in the district. As a longtime coworker of mine at DTM, she would move five. We have remained with the district because of our love for our students. The time is now to fix this problem. We've waited too long. Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Joanna Kaufman. I reside at three zero two one, Arizona Avenue. Yes, that's the city. Yes, that's Flint, Indiana. I'm here to speak to you in honor of you about what a great event happened last week. The Taste of Literacy was put on at Flint Harbor's Market by Flint teachers. I will not go for anything. As the event went on, a board member created a scene in front of several community members, Flint parents, Flint students, as they approached a table where several teachers were handing out family engagement resources. The board member began the conversation with, keep in mind, it's a Wednesday night, and what do we wear on Wednesdays? I know you have no confidence in us, but you could at least acknowledge me, referring to the UTS teacher that the proud Flint educator was wearing. The teachers remain professionals and thought it would be in their best interest to not escalate the individual, seeing that the board member was behaving in an inappropriate manner in front of Flint students who were there along with the community. The board member proceeded to make several snarky comments. When the teachers attempted to explain the materials to the board members, they were rude and rough with a condescending remark. "I know how to read." Well, God, if one of that person was Flint Schools, because if you got an educated teacher, you sure know how to read. Several other attempts were made to further explain the materials to the board member that were unsuccessful. The board member moved on to the next table, all about sharing how upset that board member was with the teachers as they proceeded once again to the next table. This incident did not end there. Oh, no. The board member went back to the previous table and proceeded in a loud and childish manner, which was by no means professional, and who knows, educators remain professional, and made several more rude and demeaning comments to the teachers, like, "If you are disrespectful to me, I can't imagine how horrible you treat your students." All of this took place once again in front of community members, Flint parents, and Flint students. I ask, is this how you want to be treated? Would I be allowed in your job, in your home, in your apartment, and have that right and not be asked to leave? Is this the way we treat individuals in this district who give up their family time, their personal time, time they don't compensate for? We don't get paid for after-school events. We do that for our kids. I will say it again, our kids, not me, not you.
My phone started ringing at six thirty this morning from parents talking about a hundred and twenty teachers was calling in sick. Then this afternoon, stories about the hardship, the hard times that these teachers was having in the classroom with their kids started coming in. And then I found out that y'all had a hundred and sixteen million dollars. There's no reason for this to be like this. Now, I know some of y'all are getting elected. I stood in front of City Hall, and people asked me who to vote for, and I called out y'all's name. I don't expect y'all to go in that bathroom and come out and pay these people. I expect y'all to create an school suspension program. I expect y'all to bring back guidance counselors. Just to keep the brief, if you don't do those things, you're gonna continue to lose students.
That's right, tell them, Rich.
And the more students you lose, and you, y'all have to spend that money at the time. There is no way in the world y'all had that much money, didn't pay these people, and y'all have to spend that money at the time. And where did you think we come from? To believe the future is our key. And if y'all keep treating these teachers like this, it's over.
It's over!
Y'all won't have a school system soon. Y'all won't have, then, another thing. It's a such thing as donations without attachments. That's what y'all need to be seeking, not donations with orders. Nobody should be donating to the Flint school club system and just telling them how they should be acting. They should be donating, giving out weight, and writing it off on their taxes. But that's not what happened this morning. They are giving you money with demands and got all these people in here. So please go into that bathroom, make whatever calls you got ready, and pay these people.
Good evening. My name is A.C. Humans. I brought a box of Cracker Jacks. You'll never know the surprise you get when you open it up.
Preach, Deacon.
Preach, Deacon.
I want to say this, that is appalling. Martin Luther King spoke about fair wages sixty years ago. Right now, in twenty twenty-four, this Flint Board of Education is not going to give these laborers... When I say laborers, I don't mean as union workers, but people have labored for our children. It's time, Mr. Prevee Speaker said, well, you need to go in the bathroom. You need to go in the bathroom.
That's right. That's right.
I want to hear somebody put a motion on the floor. How many you got, the four of you? Do you vote for it? You know, I hold now, I go dead now.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
I remember the days when I was on the誘势 services. Mayor Karen Weaver's mother, she gave me my first job. So I know how it is. And I'm telling you to do the right thing. I just believe this, and I'm gonna take my seat, that what you do down here, you gonna have to give an account to God. These ladies and gentlemen, they're struggling, they work hard just for a fair wage. That's it. Last but not least, I want to say something. And I've been saying this to you, Board members, especially you African-American Board members, that we have a security contract coming up, I guess sometime in January. And the company that has the security contract now, I forwarded this board and asked for their contract. They're working a non-signed contract. How do you give a contract, the law was told, Mr. Clack, that's what you all sent to me, the board. How do you give a contract and the Board of Education didn't sign the contract? What contract is Teach Out working on? They've been had the, whatever they're working on for eighteen, close to twenty years. I'm asking you to do the right thing. Do the right thing about these teachers and do the right thing about contracts that come to this board. And all I can see around you, but I'm pointing over there. These guys, they give a same old friends contracts. That's what they doing. The city was paying at ninety-four million dollars per month and didn't serve the rest of the city of Flint with one penny of it.
Not one, no.
And Flint Board of Education had money.
Hundred and thirty-four million.
Listen, get these, these, these hard service, how about you, public service? Public service. Get them to write it. They haven't, I didn't know they had had one in so many years. That's terrible.
I appreciate your comments. The board is here, you can thank Mr. Dunham. We will move on to our next agenda item. So we can get to the, to the meat of our, our business. I would like to see the motion from the board to back our action item, Resolution one point four to eleven point fourteen to eleven point two one, one point fourteen, and twenty-five point one. I seek a motion to back. Has been promptly moved, supported by Mr. Perkins? Is there any discussion? Saying no discussion, the motion to back all the items mentioned, and the resolution will be conducted by roll call vote. As I call your name, do you say yes or no? Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre? Vice President Clack? Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Ralberg? Trust, Trey Rolona?
Yes.
And myself, President Knight, yes, seven yes. I make the motion to approve the back item. If this motion is seconded by Claudia Perkins? And the motion by Trustee McIntyre? Is there any discussion? Saying no discussion, will it go roll call? Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yes.
Vice President Clack?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Ralberg?
Trey Rolona?
Yes.
And myself, a yes, seven yes. Board members, at this time, I see the motion and second from the board to a man here, gentleman, to add closed session under Michigan Open Media Act eight point eight. I'm seeking a motion and a second. Let a man to the gentleman to add closed session under the Michigan Open Media Act eight point eight. If they move that McIntyre, support that Trustee Perkins. Is there any discussion? Saying no further discussion, the motion to a man here, gentleman, to add a closed session will be conducted by roll call vote. Board members, as I call your name, please respond by yes or no. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yes.
Vice President Clack?
Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Ralberg?
Yes.
Trey Rolona?
Yes.
And myself, a yes. Board members, I need a motion and a second from the board to go into closed session regarding UTL under the Michigan Open Media Act eight eight.
I make a motion to move to closed session.
Is there, is there second? Motion by Perkins, supported by Trustee King. It has been promptly moved and seconded. If we need a closed session, Board members, I call your name, please respond by yes or no. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yes.
Vice President Clack?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Ralberg?
Trey Rolona?
Yes.
And myself, yes, this yes or no? Board members, this closed session has been called.
Melanie stood up.
So we are now going into closed session.
So this is ATN News Media Group recording here. Uh, thanks for coming to closed session to talk about the teachers. They didn't want to talk about the teachers, why the teachers were sitting here. So they want to do it behind closed session. We don't know how long they gonna be back there, but it's packed here. Stay tuned, we gonna stay live and see what we can get for you. Can we see the crowd? They want to see the crowds.
Did you notice I leave my bag here? Actually.
You really do? You really do?
Yeah.
Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little. Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little. Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little. Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little. Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little. Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little.
You really do? You really do?
Yes. Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little. Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little.
You really do? You really do?
Yes. Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little. Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little.
You really do?
Yes. Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little. Can you all hear us? Can they hear us, Mickey? We might have to just talk a little.
Yeah, it's so sad.
It's so sad.
Yeah, I'll be messing with you. I'm so sorry for you. I'm so sorry.
Listen, we gonna talk loud because it's a little loud here in the auditorium. But if you can introduce yourself to the A-10 News Media Group family, I would love it.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Gatz and I'm an elementary school teacher at Freeman here in Platte.
So Chrissy, the teachers made a stand today.
Yes.
They called off. They said, "We're tired." You stood in solidarity together. So do you think that's gonna make a difference? Are you gonna call on tomorrow and the next day? And I know you don't have that many sick days in the country. But I mean, what are we gonna do to keep this going? Because one day they probably say, "Oh, they're not gonna do it again." What do you think's gonna happen?
Our hope, my own personally, the teachers that I've talked with that come from my building, the hope is that the board will see and understand that we are passionate about this. All we want is for them to open communication with the UTM once again. They just talk with us again. It was so hard to not be in class today, knowing that some of my students hate not coming to school. It was hard to make that decision to call in sick. But it was time for teachers to say, "We count two. We matter too. And we need to be whole. We need to be whole so that we can give to our students."
Absolutely. And I was talking to your mom, this teacher, your sister?
That was our student.
That was the other student?
My mom did work for Platte Schools. I've been in Platte Schools because my mom was in Platte Schools. I've been in Platte Schools since I was a toddler.
Wow.
I was running around three years old. And Conest School was my playground.
Right.
You know, so I had been a part of Platte for years.
Now, can you tell the A-10 world, like, what was the breakdown? The tentative agreement was reached in October. Everybody was okay.
Yes.
And then in January, everybody wasn't okay. We had a change in leadership. Do you... What do you think?
I'm at a loss. I am completely confused with that, too. I know we were talking with both sides, our union and a couple of the board members who are very supportive. In fact, I had board members last year, there were two, board members that came to me and encouraged me, "Don't retire, don't leave. We are going to make things right for you." And I was thrilled. I'm gonna stay with Platte. I'm gonna stay being a teacher.
Now, is it too much to ask? Who are the board members that are supporting the teachers? So you just don't wanna get that up right now?
The one board member that I thought was supporting us mostly was Melody Rutherford. She worked at Freeman with us. She knew us, she was a part of us. On the Saturday meetings when we would sit, we sat every so often on Saturdays, we'd meet with MSU all day. And Melody sat down and had lunch next to me and the teachers from Freeman and shared her heart, "Again, we support the teachers." And I truly believe that there are some on the board that want to. I truly believe there are good people that still are fighting for us.
Don't they scare?
I don't know. I don't know why it fell apart. I wish I did know. I wish I had a magic wand to wave and, you know, make it right. Because we teachers, we teachers matter too.
Absolutely.
And that's what I'm hoping the board will notice. We love our kids, every single teacher here. I've had three different job offers this year. One school district I would make fifteen thousand dollars more, one school district I'd make eighteen thousand dollars more. And I chose to turn them down. I chose to stay with Platte. But how long? How much longer? And then who will be here to love our kids? Who will be here to support our good kids? Because the new teachers coming up, they're thinking about their families just like we are. They have to provide for their families too, and they can't do it on what pays new teachers.
Now, you've been with the district for a long time. So I remember when they, you know, they said, "If you give us ten percent..."
Yes, man, nineteen percent cut.
Nineteen percent. And we're gonna slowly give it back to you. Never happened.
It never happens. And since then, not only did they not give us that back, like, we weren't even given cost of living raises. We were frozen. Our wages was frozen for the past, what, ten years? I believe, I'm hoping I tell you the truth there, but I believe in ten years where we haven't even gotten the cost of living raise, everything has gone up. Gas prices, food prices, except our paycheck.
Except your paycheck. Wow. Well, you know what? A-10 News Media Group stands with the teachers and wishes the best.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, they told... School told. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, fly, don't arrest me.
What's that, the police?
They didn't see the police on my black ass. They didn't put the police on me. Let me show you the police officer they put on me. She ain't for the people.
I'm a reforcer. I'm a reforcer, y'all. Come on, Mickey, let's go on the move for Christ. Okay, come on, move. There's teachers out there, what, we can go interview some people?
Let me unplug my stuff, man.
Wait a minute, you may not have to go nowhere. I think I'm gonna go home, girl.
Are you here with technical work or are you just here, are you the youth or the teacher?
No, I'm just an independent A-10.
Okay. I'm best even.
I am for the people. I can participate in the lesson.
We writing an article about you, ma. Now, I'm messing with you, man. Nah, I ain't gonna say that. I'm gonna say I was surprised about it. Ain't right.
A-10, I know you don't like getting on camera, but...
Hey, no, wait, they trying to get by.
Oh, so they're gonna get by. But listen, we got our A-10 on. This is Nadia Garcia, man. This is A-10, but we love you.
Yeah, I heard Mickey when I was walking in, he was on the phone, and I was like, "Hey, I've always heard something."
Man, I tag you and everything. When we get to talk to our teachers, this is who I tag. This is our teacher of the decade right here. Well, how do you feel?
Frustrated, disappointed, very upset. I mean, specifically, I mean, for me in particular. I was out, you know, for these... I advocated for that slate. I sat with the Star Committee to interview them. I made recommendations for them. This was something that we talked about again and again and again. Right sizing the districts and teacher pick. Those four, and I'm gonna talk about the three that I said too, those four in particular, they promised, 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 promised.
Can we give some names to those four? What four are you talking about?
It would be the four of these ladies, like, Clack, Nadia Rutherford, Del Luna, and...
Okay, just say Clack, Rutherford, Luna, Luna, and Torey King. So we get back into that politician's promises and stuff. Then when they get elected, it falls through.
Well, and I'll say this. King and Luna have continued to advocate for fiscal responsibility. Those two, you will see, constantly bring up, trying to get people to burn to the floor and talk about price sizing, selling the buildings, things like that. Their colleagues don't want to hear it. Two votes isn't gonna get it. So, you know, and when the last committee on the 21st, you know, I'm here speaking and Mr. King, when Luna wasn't here that day, he sits there and he looks directly at you. He's listening, he's paying attention, he's nodding along. Looking over at that side as well, looking down, looking down. Not even... People work all day long, they come here to stress themselves. And no one expects them. You know, when you wanna speak out essentially against your employer, it's not easy for people to do.
No, because you face retaliation sometimes and all of that.
And so that's a hard thing for people to do. And they can't do it, and then they don't even get the time to do it, and they're not even gonna live.
That's shameful.
It's shameful.
Right.
So...
And the size, it's... The size, we got some great size here.
So this one actually was based on a sign I had made a few years ago. There was a quote, and I think it was in the Philly Magazine, one of the meetings where this was the previous board meeting, and of course, they started fighting again because of the previous board's misplaced. And there was one board member that kind of, in that desperation, just said, "Here we go again." And it made a lab, so I was like, "Yeah, that's how we feel." But every time, you guys, they don't even get to the agenda. Because they just sort of like... And so getting through the agenda a little bit, they're not gonna do it. But so, I mean, it's just like city council.
They just told me to bring this to city council.
City council on Monday, how many hours of that agenda did they get to? Long, long. And I was watching that because I was doing two of them at the time.
Oh, okay.
And that has been on there since the first conference and has never been addressed because they can't get to it.
The appointment? Wow, okay, so this is the appointment with Nadia Garcia. Okay, okay. I didn't put two of them together, I mean, yeah.
I care what my city...
Absolutely. Absolutely. Now, they put the agenda up here on the board tonight where they wanna fix some chairs. They fixing chairs. They fixing chairs in the auditorium at Southwest, but they won't raise a pay.
Kind of like they... By ninety thousand dollars for lights in Houston Stadium. Like, their baseball team doesn't have the...
What? What? I mean... Ninety thousand dollars in the Houston Stadium, but the baseball team don't have no gloves.
And that was just for lights. Let's not talk about what work needs to be done on that field, what work needs to be done on that track. That track needed to be redone when I was in high school. The bleachers falling apart, the concessions. The last time I went to a game in Houston, the concessions was on a table, the bottom was thick and deep because they're not solid. They're leaking, they're porta potties, you can't go into the bathrooms. But their argument was they did, the Applewood chair was five thousand dollars to use it per game. Which is true, it is expensive, and I get that, but at the same time, how many home games do they play? Football. Five million, four, and then you're standing on the chair. And you get money for the game, you get money for concessions. You make some money back. But the price for four or five games versus just the lights and not even all the other... It's just not responsible.
Why is you spending money for something you're not using?
It's not even a building that's...
It's not even a building that's old.
Nope.
So, well, you know what? A-10 stands with you and we wish the teachers the best. And we gonna try and see if they just wait and see. Everybody leaves, you know, they trying to clear out the crowd. We know this call's happening, go in the closed session and hope everybody...
See, you gonna win our Peds.
Yeah, we know how it goes. But we gonna try to stick it on as soon as it happens. So, but just letting you know, we're here. Thank you for your coverage. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
You have a blessed one, Nadia.
So y'all heard it. Listen, here we go. It should say, "And here we..."
They should have bring her on the show once.
Bring her on the show. Okay, I'm trying to get her on the show. I got a clip from somebody else, the Chrissy Carmichael lady, I think that was her name. I got a video, then I'm gonna upload to A-10 later. She was doing an interview with TV Live out in hallway. But this is crazy how they doing, like, why they have to go in public, I mean, in private to talk about the teachers? They could've did this where the teachers could've had an opinion. And then they gonna come back out all they... Look how they in the auditorium they got. It just thinned out. They work, and it worked, y'all, for those to be honest back there watching, it worked. So y'all can come back out now, come on back out. The crowd didn't thinned out. So come on back out, but this don't make sense. These teachers gotta put up with all kind of abuse. All kind of abuse. But you do have some good students. I don't wanna roll them all up into money. You do have some good students. But pay these teachers. You heard them say, "It took nineteen percent of their pay." I remember when that happened, they told them, "We gonna give it back to them little by little by little," and it ain't happened yet. Make these teachers holy. And we out until they come back. All right, King, turn it back around to the tables and there that's it.
I'm just letting the phone charge, yeah. This is where I was being at when he was doing his recording.
Where's the money?
This is where I was standing at when he was recording. He would be right here, and they'll be just close up here.
Boy, he'll be over there. Where's the money?
I got the speed charge, you know, it's just... Probably by the time they get money, it's fine.
And here we is in 2024. Kirk House, man.
They make me hungry. They make me hungry.
This year I got a, I got a paper.
You're excuse me.
I love that you want to do it.
You said what?
Sorry guys, hurry away.
I ain't knowin' that's gonna be your one.
Alright, everybody start singing the same lyrics at the same time, ready?
Alright.
Nobody knows the words. Pick them up and we'll all be alive. All of you can start.
I'm getting small ass bars.
I want this small box for double truck.
I have a three hour haul.
Yeah, they are great today.
Pretty much over.
Now it's a little bossy, so they insurance. She called at six, she hasn't left.
Let me see if I can organize someone.
Dude, don't get him hurt. Make him bring out graduate.
Are you fucking hell?
Really close to that, isn't it?
That's a lot of work.
We go along. And then I was gonna sit there also. I heard a call. I've been a player a lot, but I got two people on my mind.
Open the move back there. I'm just getting my stuff from up there and I said you protect us.
They ain't talking, they about to talk about shit about the news.
You from channel twelve, man?
No, I'm a slut bee.
Alright, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
How you doing? Man, you made me bust my juice, man. I get my juice, I get my juice. Nah, cause it was, Sophia was the last one, right?
Yes, yeah, I just started like a month ago.
We gonna be nice to you. Tell Jaquanie we said hey. Nah, don't do that. Don't do that, that's inside humor, please don't tell her you ran into us. So it is, ain't nothing.
I would like to call the board committee, the board committee back to order in time as eight eighteen P M. Board members, I would like to entertain emotion and respect for the superintendent and chief Nicole Cheater go back and discuss a counter regarding, a counter to. Regarding the previous.
What she say?
Chief Ms. Anderson.
No, man, you don't say what the hell you say.
With the chief Nicole Cheater, I repeat the evidence. The superintendent. I make the most, I would like to read entertaining emotion and respect for the superintendent and chief Nicole Cheater go back and discuss. and chief negotiator go back and discuss a counter regarding grievances and... I agree with you, Chief Officer. So I'll make it clear again. I would like to entertain a motion and a second for the superintendent and chief negotiator to go back and discuss a counter regarding, regarding grievances with U T F.
What does she say? What is she saying? Somebody repeated what she's saying, we don't know what the hell she's saying. Cause somebody repeated in English.
They just support.
It has been motion by the vice president, trustee Perkins.
So they going back, they going back.
Yes, uh, three to Mr. Gardner and Mr. Nelson, to the extent possible, just for us and the people watching the media, can someone explain what that motion does? Is crystal clear?
Thank you.
Sure, uh, this, this motion allows us, uh, to, to speak with the leaders of U T F about the counter offer, uh, and counter if the U T F have, uh, it puts us in a position to where we're at the table speaking about the counter offer that we had. That's what this does.
Thank you. Is there any more questions? Standing on the roof of the road column. Attorney Long?
Yes.
Trustee Riker?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Vice President Meyer?
Yes.
Trustee Magica?
Yes.
Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
And Mr. Seven?
Good, uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Gardner, and I am the chief negotiator. Uh, been able to work with the school district of the city of Landport Education as the chief negotiator since two thousand twenty-two, and, uh, had the opportunity to work with United Teams of Flint on a number of occasions on a number of difficult issues. And I know from the, uh, news reports that there have been some concerns about our relationship. Uh, there have been some challenges over the past few months, but we would like to say that since, you know, two thousand twenty-two, we ratified a collective bargaining agreement that actually provided a step on August one, twenty twenty-three, and a step on August one, twenty twenty-four, but not only that, we were able to also get a new wage scale, which really improved and, and was really hailed at the time as something that was really gonna bring a positive amount of, uh, benefits to some of the teachers that are in the audience today. So I think there's a concern, or maybe there's been a concern, that this isn't a we, that we aren't together. We may have some disputes, but I tend to believe that we are together. We may have some challenges. I think we are together, and I think that in most instances, the board of education and the administration do work together and do share common goals, and we want to make sure things get done, but get done in the best interest of our teachers and the hundred-plus individuals that are in the collective bargaining right now. So there have been some challenges, but we wanna say that in reality, that's the we, that's the board, that's the meeting of the chief negotiator, and that's also the administration. We have some new administration members here that have been just absolute, to me, I think have brought a lot to the table, from our human resources to our finance person, to our superintendent who's been here and has been working extremely hard to make sure that we improve and try to improve student enrollment. So I think that there's this sense that we're not together. I just wanna say, we are, we are, we are, we are together. And I'd like to also say that frankly, when you look at what we've provided over the last few years as far as what we've, what we've been able to provide to teachers, and that two thousand twenty-two bargaining agreement, we not only gave new wage scale, but we also did steps. We got another step coming out since one twenty-one four, but we also changed over the hard caps, right? That was a really significant thing. Was at the two thousand nineteen level, now it's at the current level. That was a positive development for a lot of teachers in the bargaining. And in addition to all of that, really it's that wage scale. It's much better than it was before. Remember that long wage scale, everybody, with the actions and all these steps? And now, combined, we got a much better scale because what we wanted to do is make sure that we attracted individuals that were in other school districts, other places, to come to the plant and be a teacher.
Have you?
And at this, we make developments, but it's not, I would say, perfect. And we say that we're gonna, we've, we've been able during this process to have a mediator involved, that's Richard Zeigler, has helped us through negotiating, uh, not one, but also he's helped us through a lot of other difficult, challenging circumstances. So I think sometimes you have the state mediator come in and become involved. It really helps to make sure that we get issues resolved, whether they're grievances that are going to move into arbitration, or there are other issues that come up and we have difficult resolving. So for us, we view ourselves as a team, we're a team, and while we may have disputes and we may have challenges, we say to you, we've given in the past. What about that COVID bonus that we're buying up in two thousand twenty-one? That's not going anywhere. Twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
It's not for you.
And frankly, that was a benefit that was provided. So we've got steps. We got step off one twenty twenty-three, step off one twenty twenty-four, and in our counter, we offered a step. That's three steps in one year. That is substantial investment in our team here. So, uh, I'd like, we've created a timeline. That timeline has been announced since Monday. It has actually been a lot of time you've invested in administration and put into the timeline. And we would like to say for all those that are here to have the opportunity to review that timeline and get the opportunity to see what has been provided to the teachers. And we, we look forward to having further discussions in person and trying to see if we can accomplish some resolution on some of these issues. So we may not be in agreement on every single, we do, uh, we, the board and the administration, the team looks forward to meeting in person together and meeting to listen to what U T F has proposed and try to problem solve. So, uh, I think, trust me.
Kind of chair, would that be insane about the work mediator? Uh, I'd like to make a motion to request the work mediator mediator, Richard Zeigler, be present and on top.
Of course. As a pause, no, I'm talking for the media, to be included in this conversation, set the trustee relative motion, then, uh, trustee King. Is there any discussions? As, as the president can ask. Now, I'm gonna give you careful, I asked this question. Those talks with the U T F, the districts, with the work mediator present, though that won't affect their contract, if those are still asking, will be separate talks?
So the contract is fired June, July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. These are going discussions about agreements, settling agreements, meaning we're attempting to resolve grievances. And so it's the dozen hundred page and argue the contract. What it is, is we're negotiating, trying to settle these grievances that are outstanding in arbitration. So that's, that's why we're doing this. The focus is on resolving the two grievances, not one or two.
Thank you. Hi, trustee, Rick Riker.
Can you, is, is it possible that you share those two grievances with us, or not?
Uh, yes.
Can you share the two grievances with us?
Yes, I, I can. I'm gonna just provide a brief description. The one grievance, uh, involves really the ability to hire individuals at a certain level on salary scale. So if you're coming from the outside, you want to, this would allow flexibility for the district to give the higher individuals at a specific level. So higher level than what it is now. So that was something that was really discussed between the parties and would have been a substantial benefit, but right now, we're moving towards arbitration on that, and that date is gonna be in April slash May. We've got another one, though, uh, April twelfth, that's scheduled. It's about prep time, and this has been an ongoing issue because we have a shortage to provide teachers with prep time, and that's been a challenge for us. We're currently working with that process and providing data to the union, and I think that, um, as far as that's concerned, we're hopeful that that issue does get resolved in the near future. I think that, I think that the administration has certainly taken steps to try to resolve. This is a challenging situation because of the teacher shortage, but with the leadership of Kelly Fields, uh, she's been able to put together and put work together with the administrators in some buildings. It is being provided currently in a much better way than it was a year and a half ago. So their efforts and, and, and actions that are taking place try to get where we need to be. It's not perfect because of our shortage. That is a real issue that impacts the prep time. So we've talked about that to the union and, uh, the district, and before bargaining, we've talked about trying to resolve that. It's, it's a hard, uh, issue to resolve in this district right now. So that's going in arbitration, April twelfth. But I hope I answered this question. You know, when you get into turn, you start just talking, talking, talking. So trying to keep it short and sweet, but, um, you understand it gets a little difficult sometimes when you have to talk.
I thought maybe I have a final question.
Yes.
So this, this talk you had, you guys are involved in U T F, that's a due contract, right? We're not negotiating a contract.
No, we're not negotiating a contract. We're trying to resolve some grievances that are outstanding.
Oh, okay, so no money.
So these grievances, the two labists talked about it, the trustee King.
So the grievances, not a contract?
Yes, it's two, we had two grievances.
Oh, thank you.
Any, any more discussion? Any more to us, first? Now we do a whole talk of the, uh, chapter one motion, trustee Young?
Yes.
We do a whole talk of the motion. Let you get another.
No, okay, I just, I stepped out.
Now we give the motion.
The motion was request, work mediator, Richard Zeigler, be present, and those that. Okay.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Riker?
Yes.
Trustee Mac?
Yes.
Trustee Mag?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
And I still, yes, um, motion has. Thank you for all.
Well, thank you very much. I've never been to a board table before. I actually had this much talking, but I would like to say thank you very much. It's, it's an honor to be here and, uh, you know, the beautiful timeline that the superintendent put together.
Can we compare comments, plan comments?
Yeah, so it's got all kinds of colors and things, and, you know, I mean, they really put some effort forth, so I just want to say thank you to them for taking that, 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 uh, work.
Yeah, and I'll just say that I believe that in these conversations that we have in the board, the board of education is receiving information from the administration and however, uh, lead negotiator, and the information that they have is what, uh, the board makes decisions, uh, their decisions are based on. And no, none of us, as I said today, to media, uh, no one at the state believes that the teachers are making, uh, the, the proper compensation. No one here believes that. Uh, I've heard it from every board member at the state, I've heard it from, uh, our administration as well. We need to do some work. It's gonna take us coming together to do some work, but we also need to band together to look further beyond this district, to get funding and money to support the work of this district. Uh, I think that there's an opportunity there for us to come together when we have these conversations, to think of ways that we can get more money and utilize state funding in a way that can help us support our teachers, not only our teachers. Uh, I know our teachers is concerned about parochies. Teachers are also concerned about principals, as well as the rest of the staff. Uh, we have to concern ourselves with all of those folks. And I think everyone, uh, in this room is concerned about everyone in this district. And at the end of the day, we're all concerned about our scholars. So I'm, I'm very happy that we're able to work together to come up, uh, with what's best for this district and what's forward. And I do believe the teachers is the bloodline, just like the board stated, that the teacher is the bloodline, uh, for the instructional practices in the classroom for our scholars. And I know that every board member here believes that. And we stand together to do what is best and what was for. And the best advice we can give our board is what we're bringing them to make, the informed decisions that they're making. Thank you very much.
And in common, of course, we'll do super jobs. Standing on, um, we've been on house about two, oh, Mr. Dyer, I'm waiting on Mr. Dyer. I appreciate it. Thank you. We've always been here for you pretty soon. Uh, thank you.
Yes, just that means time. You also, thank you very much. Appreciate you. That give me some time.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. I would like to open the door for discussion. Information I have placed upon that, the Northwest Project, uh, Vice President, must the microphone. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So there are, there's a project that, um, I've been tasked with him. Um, the main project is to grow the, so there is something that, so, some different projects that I tried to take on since I've been on the board. The first being, definitely child department, which is, as you know, like, didn't have. The second being, the dead elimination, we're in the process of doing that. And the third being, the revision of our athletic program. Um, with that comes, uh, redoing the Northwest State, okay? Now, the thing is, we need to grow our program. We all agree to this. Um, it's supposed to be a, a mega for sports, basketball, football, even baseball, track and field. Um, it is my belief that if we revise and redo our athletic, our athletic program and facilities, then more scruples will come. In essence, giving us more money, more revenue to pay the teachers and maybe go over other things within the district. So there is, uh, different groups, different, uh, people that I've worked, the practice sector that I've worked with, I would not say they're bad at this moment because they're not here, but, um... Okay, so there, it is my proposition that we go through this three phase process. The first would be the revision of Houston Stadium. The second would be the driver's training. To bring driver's training back to this world. Um, and the third would be to, um, look at the gymnasium and the locker room of Northwest. Now, this has been, this particular program, as I already did, the funds of ours have been voted for by previous boards, so it's not that we're doing anything different. We're not allocating any other funds. This, this, these, these funds will already be allocated by previous board. So I wanted to put that out there. Um, I'm not gonna go into a lot of specifics, because I have a lot of those, and of course, I have the director that's here, um, and the assistant to help me with the, with the specifics, but I just wanted to put that out there as a plan, that we are working on with the athletic director and the community members.
Um, based on the information you just, that you just gave us, um, what do you need from the board, or the district, to move forward?
Uh, I guess we'll vote. If we believe, we should start moving.
So, I'm wondering about some of the fourth things, um, perhaps the other question, is it ready to disfigure?
Uh, point of information we need, oh, no, because it's already been going out.
Well, the district's important, it's already been asked. I'm not sure if I, why I have done this, you know, why I have moved, or why I have started, but I'm not sure if these, I'll put these in motion.
And the inner field, that everything they make. Okay, and so when it comes to the driver's range, are we going to extend it back?
Yes.
Depending on the age range?
We're in the process now of surveying because we have a plan behind it. Northwestern and the Tar Heimring actually belongs to those very areas. I didn't want to, but I told you that was. So.
Um. Uh, I would ask that you move the gym and locker rooms through the first phase because that way we can have open gym and kids can have tournaments at Northwestern that go all the way out to where they have to go, I'm not sure. But I think that right there would generate an energy where kids can actually walk up to the gym and play ball on any tournaments. I think that would be a really good generator and also it's a great opportunity to capture the students and their parents because wherever the kids are, parents will follow. And I think that'd be a good opportunity for us to get good information in regards to our students' family and make sure that any barriers that they have are able to address.
So I don't think that there's anything wrong with gym for the United States.
It's hot.
Well, I mean, it's.
It's been hot so much.
Um, I think that we've got older, older, updated locker rooms. Um, but, you know, there could be that, I think that are probably the other thing.
I've gone to beaches where I was at coast, like you had to have those railroads going down the beaches. They got railroads, you know, okay, and then it's.
And from over top of the others.
Thank you, Vice President Clatt. I really appreciate you coming forward and taking the initiative, um, in, in my opinion, above and beyond the colony. I mean, this is what we're here for, but I understand how much time and effort this has taken and I, and I realize this is a passion, a love for your community. And I'm really excited because even before I was a board member, I watched the purposeful uh neglect of Northwestern and the what was happening with the, with the previous boards with the misinformation and the inaccurate surveys and things that were trying to justify closing down that school and denying our community of those, those resources that still exist that you rightly pointed out. Have you clamored for, I mean, I was in the audience begging for these things that you're , you're willing to bring back, that it is clear that the community asked for them, continues to ask for them, needs them. Um, I, I believe this will help with enrollment, not only will it help with enrollment, but we've got a, a vision that's, that's more progressive than, than regressive in terms of bringing back our driving range, you know, providing additional income, having other schools use our school district for these things. And then I think one thing I, I did hear you mention, you, you mentioned that the last two sports facilities in Genesee County that were done by Alliance School Districts are not regulation standard. So we would actually be providing a space where we could have actual state championship meets where we can, we could actually, because those other facilities, um, I'm not sure why they didn't build one, just specification, but thank you for doing this. I think it's important because we need to give something to our touch hours and then ask you through sports and then ask you for add-on value and, um, we can work out the details. Um, I, I don't know if we need to make a motion, a, a, another motion to move it forward or whatever needs to be done to, to expedite this process, to bring it forward, to, to bring fresh eyes to it, because like I said, it's already been approved. It just hasn't gotten done. Thank you.
I would, I would like to say that, uh, Trust, uh, Vice President Clatt and I have been involved with our management team to represent the athletic director and the, uh, Mr. Mybrock, the head of the position, sorry. We have been in talks with that, with the group, a creative power point while the academics with their players playing or presenting back to the board. The conversation and the talks have not finished, which applies, we have presented just yet. Now, I do understand things are taken as a longer than expected, hundred percent get that. Um, but I would also say that everything that we do is strategic, uh, and, and those conversations is to make sure that we have the right information for our board and our audience and our community, I have to go forward. Uh, but Mr. Athletic Director, the team has been doing a great job at getting the information there, but now it's time to talk about the same things that we all talked about, the stable, driving range, how far back, um, different opportunities that's being talked about and those partnerships that we made throughout that process and those conversations. So a presentation might forward coming, but it's not going to be as fast as we kind of want, but that conversation has already started, it's already going, um, it's been positive, uh, there's, you know, this challenge is believing, overcoming that, that I think we should just, not even mind it, I, I think we should just wait, waste the presentation when we see all the great work that they have been doing and then we can talk about that afterwards. But all the comments has already been made about gyms and all that good stuff, it's already been talked about, come flush through. So I think we should just allow the process to work out, come back, let's have a conversation and hopefully you may have the answers, the answers to that question that you had.
I would like to add that I also reached out to the head of the building because we qualify for a certain grant, um, this entire day is to, is to grow, get, grow, and give great record to the district. Um, there was something else I wanted to add.
Teachers?
Um, oh. The first place, basically, it's, it's, and they, that's, they, they, they're asking about that association certified. The, the point, um, there are, there is, uh, only one of the schools that we learned that, uh, that makes us a certified candidate. So the idea was is that they did not essentially township the fellow, that you have their educational weeks, regular years, possibly, you know, quality, state quality, even a sleeping bed out of the sea. Now, also with that in mind, there are little league football teams that we, that we like to do, um, we got, there's, you know, who, where, the idea is to bring back driver's training at a discount, free for the schools or pay, pay for, uh, a regular rate for, uh, kind of, out of the district's students, that's still something out in the United States. But the entire project is to grow, grow and, and gain record, that's the idea of mine is. So I would like to add that, uh, to our training opportunities, because we do qualify for a certain grant, also I reached out to, uh, Sheriff's Office to possibly, possibly bring, uh, a lot of partnership so that the, the garage, building the classroom there, that it also happens, these aspects. So we've got that, we've got a, a, we did, hopefully, we did some of this, we shared that, and we did, that's what I wanted to say.
And the serving, the driving range, we reached out to Ninety Year Shit.
No, we still live in the States, but we do, we do, we have, you know, we have noticed that we have, uh, it's part of the movement, we can reach out to, um, for, for, you know. So we still live in the States, that's what I'm saying.
I would just like to probably say that, um, now we got this initiative on track, maybe we just won't just wait for so long again, maybe a couple, a couple weeks, we'll start doing anything that we can, you know, they do us.
I can tell you the prices, but I don't, I'm not definitely a veteran or nothing, but I'm a.
Yeah, but you know, we're trying to find the bottom rule, and so, um, if we can follow, we should be able to update us probably somehow, we just have to get our, just throw it up and then we can bring it forward to the, uh, the whole, uh, process to the community. Just there you go, process. Again, great talk, we appreciate that mission. Thank you for customizing me and doing this, Mr. Johnson, and, uh, we got, uh, staff and the nation hall, so we really appreciate your involvement.
And we have board members here, any comments, the full way of genre, I can do here on myself. Okay, Trustee, our representative.
Um, I would, I would address that teacher that came up to the, uh, podium, I was the board member and I didn't have my friend to run and I stepped up to the table. I didn't say a word, the literature was on the table and it was three of them, I don't know, it was this class, it was three white women. And when I tell you I was taking that three pickets, I mean, I was giving that two pickets. They looked at me like I was nothing. So I said, so you just, I would acknowledge you, what were you doing? Well, what does it stand for? Community engagement point, well, I can read, tell me what I'm looking at, never said a word. So I went to the table next to her where it was brown yellow, she told me everything I needed to know. Natasha was, came, she bothered me, well, if I can, I know, I'll say something to her. Okay, they still stood there. And I looked at them and I'm like, you know what, I can only imagine how you treat your black kids. Now, I understand that the union had things going on, I've been in the union, I've been there, but it's the sort of way you represent yourself. I turned back, I, I was really taken back with the no confidence because you do that, but what are you saying when you're supposed to be on the community? It's the time and the place for everything, but being rude and disrespectful, I'm not listening, I'm not better than you, but I wish I could have recorded the way you read my book and that. And I take issue with that, no, I was upset, I was very upset because you don't look for a kid to pay and even if you didn't know me, that made it worse. So when a person, you know, tells a story, tell, tell the truth, because I identified at all, yes, I reported the three young ladies to Miss Fields and also to Miss Wilson and also Miss Wilson was standing there, so something's not right, but I don't know, I was, I was on my, I was on it, but when I tell you they looked at me like I was less than them, I meant that and when, and I repeated again, it was three pickets looking at a black girl and I took major offense to that, I'm a woman just like you, I'm an adult. You had this event to present information, presented information, that was it. It was several books and you pointed out a title, community engagement, and that's all. Why are you being there? If you're that angry, why are you being there? Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee. And one last question.
Yeah, I don't know, um, so in twenty twenty-two, I was supposed to run the Department of Education. I understood, um, how challenging things were when it came to how you care teachers, compared to the district and our schools, the amount of bigger properties that they kind of moved down, uh, the operational deficit, the moral, turn around. And most of the issues that the district has faced and, and had faced for many years, I live by, tons of rice for two lots, I see it every day. Um, so I'm not discouraged by the demonstrations, because to be honest, I probably would say anything about a teacher in the schools, come on protest. Um, and that, that meeting, I still believe and will continue to believe that we're partners and addressing this issue. Uh, I'm happy that you've gotten that message from, not just our superintendent, but from him and us and the united effort. You don't have to see me despair publicly or privately because this is a long-term partnership and it's for the kids and I get it, uh, there's some of those people all late and that's not obvious, I have this plan that I make, um, but I want to stay on and connect this effort and resolve it and I think you will at some point. Thank you.
Trustee King.
Uh, yes, I want to take the time to highlight our scholars that went to the University of Michigan. For, uh, they had a conference, and our scholars were taken to represent the community school as well, um, they shared their insights about technology, education, and, and AI at the table, um, to me that is a huge thing because students voice, uh, at those kind of tables, I was one of those students before, at those tables discussing certain issues of the fact that celebrations are common. I do want to give, uh, credits to our scholars, basic Casa, and, and his leader, who, I'm sorry about pronouncing his name wrong, Elijah, Elijah, uh, that did a great job there. I've had positive feedback from, um, from the people that organized that event, they was excited about the scholars being at the table. I would also like to, uh, you know, commend our academics team along with the staff that, uh, put together the teaching literacy, that was my first, uh, teaching literacy event, I was able to attend and I was so, I missed the last one and I missed the last one, I feel so bad and I was so glad I was able to attend this one, this was a phenomenal well played event, um, our, our staff, hundred percent did that for literacy. When we understand that literacy is key to everything, to when we sign a name or a paper, documents, or housing, et cetera, our scholars are, you know, I love to see our district promote literacy and great things like that and seeing our families out there, seeing, uh, our scholars out there reading books, understanding what's reading is like, um, in our, you know, reading month, beautiful to see. So I do want to, um, commend the team, especially our, our director, academics, um, and active team spirit, but also all of each of their staff that put in hard work and made that work, uh, PR is always, especially with PR, that, that was a fantastic event. I just want to give credit to our team, you know, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Harris.
How was that, so attended the literacy, um, outing, it was outside, the children were just in the most, I ran into the superintendent there and, uh, Swellford, Mr. King, we all went over and it was just, I mean, everybody was engaged and they had a lot of good materials and they shared a lot of good food, too. So it was really nice and I just commend the, the whole board, the superintendent and everybody for putting on.
Thank you.
Administration.
Trustee Madam.
Um, yeah, so, uh, I wanted to thank everybody for, uh, how well they put into this meeting. Um, we are moving to, to work forward. I do want to reiterate what other board members have said about the, the literacy that I was, I was injured and couldn't, couldn't make it, but I have to look forward to that. I was very excited that we're working with, with partners, uh, like Samash Brown and, and Hama Soul, um, who couldn't, who couldn't do good in that and we've got so many community partners and resources that we're just, we're just so fortunate to have globally because they're international artists. Um, I also want to thank the teachers for coming out and, uh, coming to the meeting, these last couple of meetings and, and expressing their concerns, they are being heard, they are being listened to. Um, I am currently a member of the CWA, both the CWA and the AFT and, uh, I work in labor organizing, so I am not, I'm sympathetic to what you're talking about and what you're asking, um, and so we're doing everything that we can. This board is the most, I would say, based on my research of the school board, including a lot of, uh, other, other projects, is the most labor-friendly board to the school, the school district has ever been. Um, and if you look at what we're working with, it really has been policies, uh, of previous boards that we're trying to undo, uh, we're trying to also deliver a, a state that is woefully underfunding our democracy and our public education system. Um, I would hope that we can all come together, uh, we're a school district and that includes the teachers, that includes the unions, we should be on the same side, uh, and your anger is very justified, but it's misplaced. The people that we need to be fighting, we need to be fighting for better funding for education, we need to be funding, uh, fighting for better resources. Um, the board can't provide that, we can't change the structure, we can't change the system and we're trying to work within the system as best we can, raise the higher caps, we not given over twenty-two thousand dollars in notices and yes, that was the board decision because we had, we fought to have that portion of the, the extra funds actually given in and hatched into the teachers. Um, but our hands are tied in a lot of ways because of legislature, because of federal policies, because of state policies, we need to come together as a community and you have a board who is willing to do that, we need to go fight in Lansing, we need to go fight in Washington, there's a bigger, there's a bigger enemy. We're struggling for crumbs amongst each other and that's shameful and that's shameful. We deserve the whole pie, we deserve, and that's, and the teachers, the teachers deserve to remember the dignity, dignity, they deserve to be thankful, I've always said that, but there's no hole to be given because not because of the board, but because of the way that funding or within education is thought about and the way that it is funded and the approach of the public to the body and the Congress. So that's, I, I welcome conversations, um, you know, that's, I'm here for that, I would love to have these conversations to look how we can all kind of unify to fight the real enemy and move forward and get what the teachers deserve and get what the students deserve because we deserve public schools that are involved on this, thank you.
There's anything to worry about.
Some things that I do want to respond to, and I appreciate, uh, he did do this thing and he asked about the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, security contract and maybe Mr. Johnson, um, give some information on that, what, what we need to do to get that done since that conversation has not been brought back up. Number two, we had some people come to the board and said, you guys paid some, some babies of dollars. That Gessa one, two, and three money came as stipulation and I hope that it believed eighty-seven percent of it was in education. Uh, we took as much as we could, uh, when we came on board, we gave Gessa one, who's with COVID, we gave Gessa two, we then, uh, two and three time, we just spent money exactly forty to the guy that was handing it out to us. You had to acknowledge and break, that's what I, this is another money problem. And for someone to comment and say that you took a hundred some million dollars, what did you do with it? We renovated, no, right, this is what you know, for some, we could do with this money, we have to go to the public and the public tell us how to spend. You cannot steal money from the board, I hear people out there say they stole, they stole, we don't even know what a check is, like, is it possible to steal anything? And then we're given because we don't get paid to sit here. However, we spent everything according to the guy that we renovated, do our right, we are putting the campus on there, Ron, Ron Ellis and home, we, and then we tore down Washington, we have two years of fund and that lasts us about two years, we have a governor that, uh, did that elimination, am I correct, Mr. Johnson? They denied the food plant and eliminated that, who has been through the water crisis, we went through the pandemic, a house died, we went down, we can't be right by our teachers because if you eliminate, and I'm speaking to the governor, call me this morning, on the phone with the state, why don't you guys deal with us, dead elimination of the plant so we can get these teachers back into the classroom, smaller classroom, that is what we need to have successful student. Our students, it's only a way to apple field if we don't get this reading up and get these classrooms back together. Many persons, I worked in this school, ten years, so I'm like into this school, ten years, worked outside with teachers, I had some teachers that worked with me, maybe some successful, then I have some teachers that don't have respect for Black owners and human beings and they were too cheap for that certification, but I kept going on until I got right here. My job is to make us whole, but we need help, we need government help, these rapid buildings that everybody's lining up, you can't even pay one or two bills, but, but however, we are going to, we are going to win, we are going to have a shovel in the ground because this boy is working all over the place, he's been up in DC begging for money, it's only government now, give us this dead elimination so we can make our teachers whole, make our students whole and make this district whole so we can create new schools. That is my stand on this here, I'm working with my board members, I've been working with the union, I would not sit here and watch hundreds of teachers, my goal is to make the substance of teachers whole because without them, your job ain't that easy. Also the payroll, make them whole, make everybody whole, it's just not a white person deal, the principals work, they need money, but the issue is, we don't have, nobody wants to spend dime to help a delar, go on the podcast, go on these different, uh, shows and stuff, you pour us down, 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 and I support this, brother, sometimes we have their thing, just disrespect that they'll sometimes respond, but if that's it, that we give enough, the answer is no. Mr. Don, on behalf of the board, could you please explain to him what is this made by our F P for security?
So, uh, the board has already stated to the administration that, um, to put our P up for, uh, saving security, uh, the IRP is already set to go over Monday, uh, we're supposed to have this done, uh, like you, and it will be.
So, um, I would like to recognize all of, most of the brothers and sisters that are running around now, I would also like to be that, know what, um, Trustee King said about Mason, they graduated and it was accepted to take the carry, I'm sure that there are scholars that have been accepted, just glad to know from that, that about that one. Um, and really, I just wanted, excuse me, I'm sorry, I wanted to say this directly to the teachers that came here and wanted to be educated. Um, we hear you, uh, we need you. We respect you and we value you, it may seem like it doesn't, and if anybody, I'm not, I'm not taking anyone, anyone's interest away, but if anyone understands how you all feel, it's me, as a former school employee that was employed on this in two thousand fourteen, who had money to take it from him himself, I do want to say, the feeling is, i- if, it's very awkward to sit here, when we hear a lot of my, a lot of my former friends and coworkers, whole side of them, they don't have confidence in us, that's, that's, that, I do want to say, but as a former employee of the district, it hurts me as well, it's hard to look at you in the face, it's hard to sit here up here at this board table and look at you in the face, knowing that you take it because it's you take it and to have it appear that we don't care and that we don't stand with you, that's the first of the truths, at least it is, I, I don't want to speak to everyone, I'm sure we, you feel the same, but that is first of the truths, especially from Vice President Clatt. So I would like, I would speak directly to you, I would like for you all to know that. Um, and I am excited and looking forward to coming to, uh, the resolution, hopefully we can, we can, we can stick together and we can work it out.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, I'd like, uh, one more on the side for our fallen soldier, Mr. Eric Mays.
The board is basically, of this record voting on Wednesday, March twenty, twenty twenty-four, this is the year that they are saying about this, that there won't be, uh, a, a joint at nine eleven.